Well, that's what I told Kelly. I says if you wait even, you need to get your button gear. Because, um...
We almost had a meeting today.
Yeah, what else did I give us?
This was always kind of...
No, Berkeley. So Kelly said today. Yes.
All right. Well, we are back. We already opened the meeting and had closed session and come back to open session. So we will start our meeting this evening with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So our first item is to approve the, adopt the agenda as presented. Do I have a motion to that effect?
So much.
Thank you.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Eileen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes. We're at the part of our agenda now where we have an opportunity for the public to provide comments. Is there anyone that is here this evening to provide comment at the meeting? I was hopeful. Maybe next meeting. Okay. All right. Well, we will go on to the consent agenda, which makes us through, from items 3.01 to 6.03. And I have a quick item we read for this section. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda, listing several items for approval by the board by a single motion. Most of the items listed under the consent agenda have gone through board subcommittee review and recommendation. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and the public in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed by the consent agenda at the request of any board member. So do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items 3.01 through 6.03?
So much.
So good.
Thank you. Andrew?
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Eileen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes. All right. The next item is the Series 2007 bond refunding under unfinished business.
Yeah. As you will recall, under consent agenda, you have captured some underwriter engagement agreements and two of which are related to the 2007 GO bond refinancing and the other to the 2008 GO bond refinancing. So in respect to those two issues, this evening, we are ready to move forward with a go-to-market resolution on the 2007 series. At our December study session, we had teed up the 2008 as well. And then following that, we're able to connect with George K. Baum, with Scott Connor, as well as David Evans, to bring them up to speed on those couple of issues. We have since put it to George K. Baum to come back to the table in January on the 2008 series with some additional funding options and scenarios. That's why you do not see that particular issue here this evening. Nonetheless, we're ready to move forward with the go-to-market resolution for the 2007 series, for that to be executed over the course of the next couple of months with final authority, final approval on the issue coming back to the board probably sometime this spring. So we would present that to you this evening for recommendation. And you have the motion language in terms of the specific terminology in and around the resolution provided in your package this evening.
Questions or discussion before we...
Extensive discussion?
Yeah. So that's, this is consistent with the previous conversation, I think. Would someone like to make the recommended action, make the motion?
Do we need to read the entire thing?
I think so, yes.
Okay.
I know you can.
I can read. I move the board adopt the resolution of the Board of Education of Liberty Public School District, number 53, Clay County, Missouri, authorizing George K. Baum and Company to proceed with preparations to offer for sale refunding lease participation certificates to provide funds to refinance certain outstanding lease obligations of the district and authorizing special tax council to proceed with the necessary documentation therefore.
Second.
That was the easy part.
So there's no further discussion. Sandra Lee Colville?
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Eileen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes. Fine work.
Probably the longest motion I've ever read.
All right. Under new business, we have contracts and agreements out first.
We do have one item that is presented this evening for first read, and that is the FAFSA data access agreement. As districts are working with Missouri Department of Higher Education across the state, this is being put forward. I know academic services work closely with this. Anything to highlight or update for the board this evening, Dr. Williams?
If you, there are points two and three on page two of the agreement that really capture the spirit of the FAFSA data access agreement. And really, it's about helping us gain access from Department of Higher Ed about which of our students have not filled out FAFSA, so we can encourage them as part of Department of Higher Ed's initiative to get as many students to complete FAFSA and access any kind of financial aid toward higher education that they're eligible for.
We would just present that one this evening for recommendation on first read. Any questions?
So it's just a motion. Should we read the first read item?
Yes. And I'm looking at the motion language right now. On the iTunes U agreement, you had to go through a process of registering initially before you could access the agreement. So we have started that process and thus you have the PDF of the iTunes U agreement. Wanted to present that to you this evening. At the same time, we are forwarding that to legal counsel for an opinion. We have yet to receive that legal opinion. So let's extract that with the sole motion this evening being the FAFSA data access. We'll return to the table with the iTunes U agreement for approval at a later date.
And actually, the best was for first read. Do you want the option of first read? Do you adopt an option of first read on that? Or is it just for first read?
It is not time sensitive.
Okay. So we can either adopt it this evening or wait until later.
My hearing is not good, so sorry.
We could wait or adopt now. Which would you rather?
I would, if you can, if you are willing to adopt now, that would be great.
Move forward with the FAFSA agreement on first read and then we'll bring the iTunes U agreement. So there's no cost associated with the FAFSA agreement? And it's just gives you the ability to understand who's applying and who hasn't?
It won't be me, actually. I have to provide the names of those people who get access to confidential information. It'll be the counseling staff in each high school and the two head principals.
And then they'll be able to know who has not, so that can encourage them?
So they can encourage them and their families to engage in that application process.
So the motion then would be I move the board adopt the FAFSA data access agreement?
Correct. Again, on first read.
On first read.
Motion and second. Sandra Lee Colville?
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Eileen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes. All right. Let's talk about 2016 and 17.
Under 8.02, as this first semester or second semester starts, first semester concludes, we already begin the planning and for the closeout of this school year and then planning for the next school year. So we'll look to do that on a number of fronts. Appreciate the work of Team Liberty over the course of the semester in looking at our calendar. You have a couple of documents that are captured in board docs for your review, one of which is a memorandum that captures some comparison data as we look to other districts across the metropolitan area. Key items include the start date. We also capture the winter break, spring break. You have there in front of you, draft is the second document that captures a lot of those pieces. And looking at it historically, one of the things that we noted in the 2016-17 calendar is the exclusion of what we used to call Easter break, when we used to have four-day breaks with a Friday and Monday in and around Easter. Oftentimes, that Good Friday previously would be folded into spring break. And so there are some years where it's captured inside spring break, other years when it's not captured in spring break. And so that was a, kind of a nuanced piece in respect of the 2016-2017 calendar. As we looked through that, we really were struck with how do we phrase that particular day? Because we really no longer have an Easter break, but instead, we've captured a longer week in terms of spring break. Nonetheless, we have a placeholder there, and that placeholder is due in part to some policy that we have related to 12-month employees receiving 12 holidays in terms of paid holidays. And so we're still kind of looking at that particular date. It's a placeholder there. The same time, as you look at the conclusion of spring break, as that wraps up to the end of the year, in the absence of a dedicated day off for both students and staff, that is a fairly long haul. And right in the midst of that is the assessment window that takes place from the state level with DESI. And so those are a couple of key points that we've looked at in regard to the calendar. One question that was raised is could you pull that April Friday day off and place that elsewhere in the calendar? What that would end up doing is you could potentially shorten the length of your year. The one piece that we would want to certainly honor would be the board policy in and around extending 12-month employees those 12 paid holidays. One trade-off that was discussed earlier this week in our conversations here at the office was the Wednesday prior to Thanksgiving break. While students are afforded the opportunity not to have classes, which I'm sure they like, nine-month employees are given the same option in terms of teachers. Our 12-month staff is actually present on that particular day. So those are some of the things that we've kicked around in terms of the proposal that you have in front of you, the memo and the recommended draft calendar would certainly open it up to Dr. Vogelar and that he works closely with Team Liberty to provide any additional insight that he might have.
Yeah. I think moving the day off of April 14th to a different day is doable, but the things that would have to line up is it would have to be connected to a holiday, or we'd have to change policy. By definition, just a random day would not constitute a holiday. We could do that, moving it to like Thanksgiving Eve, I guess you'd call that a holiday. We do it for Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. But we would have to move that, we'd have to figure out a way to still provide that 161st day of work to our non-exempt employees because they, obviously, they're counting on the opportunity to work there. So we'd have to sit down and look at how we can move that day, but still have it balance out to 261 days for our 12-month non-exempt employees.
Any other questions or thoughts?
Discussion in and around the recommendation that you have before you this evening. We will have another opportunity to connect with Team Liberty prior to the January 19th meeting. Is that correct, Dr. Vogelar? And then the night of our next board meeting in January, we will certainly have a calendar hearing in terms of allowing opportunity for public comment in and around the calendar hearing, so.
That was my only question on that one in April. And that was the one that, you know, who brought that was because of, you've got basically 10 days off under the calendar, if you include the time off for the parent-teacher conferences. Then they're back for two weeks, and then we got another day off, right in the middle of what has typically been the testing window, which could be a good or bad thing, but if it could be tied to another holiday.
And as you'll recall, when we did have that four-day Easter break, that tends to migrate kind of forward and backward depending upon, you know, earlier in March, later in April. And so it could conceivably have happened where you have an extended, long spring break week, and then you turn around and have a short four-day week and then Friday off. So as we were surveying with Team Liberty this year, we did put forth a question in and around that second parent-teacher conference in the spring, knowing that whatever feedback that we got back from our community, we certainly wanted to act in accord. And so we are leaving or retaining that second parent-teacher conference in there. Another option, looking ahead, not necessarily for the 16-17 school year, but perhaps 17-18, would be perhaps a trade-off in regard to that second professional development workday that's captured in the spring semester, and that you could potentially look to push that deeper into the second semester if you so chose. Keeping in mind that we certainly want to vet that with both our classified and certified staff via Team Liberty, so. Okay? Anything else that you'd like for the district to look into in respect to the calendar or bring back to the table with Team Liberty to consider? Sure. Oh, no, no, not a problem. So we'll follow up in advance of our January board meeting and the calendar hearing, should we have any additional changes or insights that come from Team Liberty, so. Appreciate the feedback from the board.
So no action required at this point?
Correct.
Very good. So legislative priorities is the next topic.
Under legislative priorities, you will recall that on December 1st was the deadline for both the Senate and the House of Representatives to prefile legislation. And so in a previous Friday update, you saw in and around several hundred pieces of legislation that have already been filed with the Missouri Legislature. So as we've combed through those, there are some obviously related to education. I think a lot of people were surprised that walking into a spring legislative session that was at the same time an election year, that there were that many bills that were prefiled. Typically, election years are a little more sparse, but nonetheless, we have what we have. In looking at our legislative priorities that we put in place last spring, as we talked as a board in putting that before our senators and representatives, we have started with that foundation, knowing that we worked on that last year. We will see similar issues that will arise. One new item that you will have noted will be some priorities captured in and around economic development incentives, knowing that every city, municipality, school district kind of does things differently, knowing that our region of the metropolitan area, that we not only need to consider what's going on here, but certainly what's going on as we compete with our neighbors in Kansas City as well as Kansas. We've crafted some language there to try to be able to make some headway at the legislative level. This has been done on multiple occasions, multiple attempts, to no avail, but nonetheless, that we feel like there's a need to try to level the playing field. So we've captured some language there for your review. As far as the timeline goes, would solicit any feedback that you have on any of those priorities. We've also included a pamphlet for you on the 2016 legislative platform that is put in part together by the cooperating school districts in the Kansas City metropolitan area for your review. So would solicit your feedback, any suggestions, recommendations that you have. In terms of our timeline, would certainly like to try to tee that up for our legislators and forward that to them with a cover letter sometime in January, knowing that the State of the State address happens in and around January 20th from the governor's standpoint, which really gets the ball rolling on a lot of fronts, primarily on that front in terms of developing the state's budget as the legislative session progresses. So just would solicit your feedback on that. Let us know if there's anything that we should consider or add to that from the board's perspective, and we'll look to do so.
I didn't have last year's funding. I thought that we were a little more explicit in innovation section about consideration of schools that are pursuing innovation or districts that are pursuing innovation and the need for dedicated funding.
And we had talked a little bit about that and landed on the, so what you have now is the most recent update from last year. There's kind of a companion conversation going on with the state right now, meaning the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And now that you have the reauthorization of the S E A, we may have a little bit of a window to be able to do something at the department level, not necessarily the legislative level, in terms of allowing for innovative districts to kind of move out ahead. So that's kind of the conversation piece right now. But in terms of shoring up that language legislatively?
Might.
We could fold something in above and beyond what we captured last February.
So we had talked about it. I remember the conversation about it, but we didn't end up putting something in the document.
What you see is the extent of the verbiage terminology that we pushed to our legislators last spring. Yeah. Could certainly add more in respect to detail. I think there's a, there's a conversation to be had as well as to what do you want folded into legislation as compared to the leeway provided to the local entity via the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So you could, you could likely argue both sides of that.
And whether it's, you know, funding to jumpstart something or just a little bit of leeway in terms of some of the requirements, it does feel like some of the innovation that is going on here in other places does take a lot more than just running with existing rules.
I think we've garnered attention, if anything, from both the legislative level as well as the department, in that we, over the course of the last semester even, have had visits from both to the Northland, in and around the work that we're doing in our district, but then also in conjunction with the collaboration among the area districts with Northland CAPS. And so we're looking at trying to do that again second semester in terms of drawing attention to our elected officials and those that are aspiring toward higher office over the course of the next electoral year. So any, any additional thought, detail we can fold in certainly is welcome, and we can review collectively as a board if we want to try to expand on that priority.
What's the timing around this?
Looking to try to have the legislative platform, legislative priorities approved in January would be ideal so that we can get out in front of it rather than wait too deep into the legislative session. I know last year, keep in mind, we were formulating it from nothing. We actually extended and pushed that into February a little bit. So as far as the date that that letter and document was forwarded to our legislators, I'd have to go back and check, but I believe it was the first part of February.
So we'll revisit this at our work session in January?
Yeah. Yeah. That's actually on the tentative agenda at this point.
It doesn't look like things are completely different than they were last year.
No, I think it's a good foundation to start from and then being able to adjust as issues come and go, depending on part what's going on with the legislation that's been prefiled. Give you an example, right now, there are several bills out there in regard to school start date, which has been there for, each year that I've been a superintendent, I remember legislation in and around the school start date. That's one of those local pieces that districts are able to influence by way of a calendar hearing, as we're gearing up to do in January. So there are some things that you see time and time and time again, but then all of a sudden, there are issues that show up for the first time that you probably need to spend a little bit additional time digesting.
Seems like it's a little bit of micromanagement, but that's my personal opinion. Any other questions or comments around the legislative agenda? We'll talk again in a few weeks then?
Yep.
So the reports from the administration?
Academic Services is first. Dr. Williams?
The first item from Academic Services is the course proposal. It's up for first read tonight. Jennifer Higgins from Liberty North High School proposed a sports media course, the impetus being that many of our students are involved in internships in the area of sports marketing and media, and several are pursuing their degrees in the area of sports journalism. And so the course that she has proposed pulls from University of Missouri's Sports Marketing and Media Program, as well as a Palo Alto, California course, aligning that coursework that we're doing at high school level with the collegiate coursework that many of our students are pursuing. So it's up for first read. No staffing implications. We have three teachers currently in the district certified to instruct the course, and both high schools are excited about this proposal. So if you have any questions as you read through it, give me a call or send me, I'm happy to answer those. And then a couple of highlights from the Academic Services report. The first one is the DESI Classroom Diagnostic Tool was released on November 2nd, and that is part of the interim assessment package toward the new Missouri assessments. They're not supposed to be used as predictives, but all of our teachers are aware of them and have the opportunity, if they so choose, to access those interim or classroom diagnostic assessments, is the appropriate terminology, using the same platform as our MAP test that you direct. Third through eighth grade math and reading are the assessments. They last anywhere between 45 and 90 minutes, depending upon the grade level. Teachers, again, get the reports immediately and are able to use that information on an instructional level, but not as a predictive to MAP performance. And then the final item I'd like to highlight tonight, Dr. Moore and Mr. Carr are leading a group of core and specialty teachers, specials teachers, in a middle school scheduling study that starts in January of the coming semester, and they hope to make a recommendation via me and Dr. Tucker by December of next year. The thinking is that we've been in the scheduling configuration for, this is now our third year, and they have some ideas about innovation, appropriately segueing on the previous topic, that they would like to explore. So they're going to take some teachers on some site visits, research ways to do some interdisciplinary things, and reconfigure what intervention time might look like at the middle school. So those things are all part of the conversation at this point, and the first full meeting of that group will be in January.
Will they also be considering time of day start?
What time the day starts could be certainly part of that conversation. I know David has to talk to me about that, so I'm sure that that would be something. Any other questions?
Time describes a lot of things that happen.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Any additional questions? Next would be finance and Sullivan.
Good evening. I have one monetary donation to recognize. That was in the amount of $2,150 donated by John Tran to Liberty High School to assist in the enhancement of the school. We would like to thank him for that. State of Missouri revenue growth remains pretty strong through the end of November at a rate of about 4.22% increase over prior year. So that's a good thing for our state payment to keep where it is and not hopefully see a decrease in that. This week, we finally wrapped up FY '15. All of our final expenditure reports have been approved, and the audit has been uploaded and submitted to DESI. So we are all closed on... and submitted to DESI, so we are all closed on FY '15. And FY '16 is only halfway over, so that's a good thing. And that's pretty typical. Everything usually takes that amount of time, so we're in a good situation for that. We have started with budget meetings with all of the building leaders. I've met with all of them and walked through and talked about concerns for this year and next year. We will roll out the actual budget worksheets at the beginning of the year in January for them to start budgeting for FY '16. And the business office, of course, will be very busy in the next month and a half issuing W-2s, 1099s, and the new ACA reporting. And that's all I have for you tonight, unless you have questions for me. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Sullivan. Next is Dr. Vogel R., Human Resources.
Very good. The HR report has been uploaded for you to have access to, but there are four items in that report I'd like to highlight this evening. One is that the instructional learning coaches or instructional coaches, innovation and learning coaches are piloting an evaluation system, the coaching evaluation system, and that is attached for you to see there in the midst of piloting that. Dr. Westfall led the charge on trying to create an instrument that complies with the seven principles that the state put forward on teacher evaluation. Our innovation and learning coaches are contracted as teachers, but they have a unique enough job description that the teacher evaluation system isn't a perfect fit. So they've developed a tool and in conversation with the Network for Educator Effectiveness and Dr. Mark Dos and his team specifically, they're piloting an instrument this year. They're about midway into that instrument, and Dr. Westfall is describing success and buy-in with that. So the rubric for that system is attached for you to look at. The other three items I'd like to highlight fall under the health and wellness. The first one, Team Liberty commissioned Rebecca Fisher, who's our wellness coordinator, to go out, kind of do a all-district world tour, if you will, to facilitate communication with regard to the premium differential to all employees. And she's reported in the, in the report here that as of December 10th, she'd made contact with every building and every facility site across the district to communicate about the premium differential and answer questions with regard to that. The second thing is she is now shifting gears to setting up the wellness screenings and health risk assessments. That's a big component with regard to the premium differential, and so those will be booked in January and communicated out. They'll be held primarily in April and May of the spring during that season. It's not required for our employees to take advantage of that. They can do that through their own doctor if they want, but as a way of creating convenience for our employees, we offer those wellness screenings in April and May of each year. The final thing I want to talk about is that wellness goes far beyond just medical health and wellness to financial health and wellness also. Rebecca Fisher tells that in January, they're going to be launching a 20-day financial wellness program called Fiscal Fitness, and the focus there is reducing stress caused by finances. That obviously stress of any kind can impact health and wellness for our employees, and finances is a big trigger point when there's stress related to that. So this is an offering that she's setting up in January to launch with our employees who'd be interested in participating in that. So with that, obviously there's more in the report, but that's what I'd like to highlight for you, unless you have any questions.
20 days to being stressed, financially stress-free?
Yeah, and I don't think board members are allowed to sign up.
Discrimination again.
Again.
We could go and observe.
Good.
Exactly.
Any questions for Dr. Vogel R.?
Okay. Operations, Mr. Anderson?
Thank you. In addition to what's outlined in the report that's loaded up on Board Docs, just a couple items. One, first related to construction, Liberty High and Liberty North are pretty much wrapped up with the exception of a few items remaining on the punch list, and they're actually scheduled to do quite a bit of that work over break since there's a good window of time to get in there without any interference. So that's all scheduled to take place here in the next couple of weeks. You may have noticed the crosswalk signal on Conister near Epic has been installed. I didn't get out there today. I assume it's not operational yet. I know they have some programming and working closely with the city and MoDOT to kind of get that up and running, I'm sorry, not MoDOT, with KCPN. So we expect that to be up and online here probably by the beginning of next semester. So that's good news to get that wrapped up. And then the last thing I'd raise is we had a, we're in the midst of a process to look at and interview architects for the facility master planning and on-call services for the district. We received 12 interested architectural firms. We've narrowed that down to four, and we bring them in in mid-January to interview with the hope set by the January 19th board meeting that we'd have a recommendation for you all at that point in time. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Anderson?
The last item then would be my report, and just want to provide you a couple of highlights from it. The first of which is really reflecting on the first semester as we did a couple of modifications to our organizational structure in regard to our strategic leadership team and bringing some additional administrators to that conversation. And really, everyone is captured there that is responsible for the strategic plan in the district. Another component that we've tried to fold into those meetings that occur weekly is what we refer to as a data cohort or a data crew, which consists of Bob Citro, Kelly Solari, Christopher Hand, and others as needed. And so we've spent some time looking at the data attributed to the strategic plan and have reviewed extensive reports really in and around the scorecard as it relates to the annual performance report, looking at some special ed data, special services data with the assistance of Dr. Chris Martin. We've also looked at data in and around technology integration related to Clarity Bright Bites. We've looked at some student discipline data, and so we've spent the semester reviewing the data attributed to the strategic plan and are in discussion as to pushing that data out to the board as well and what that would look like, either a study session via a Friday update or for further discussion with the board as time prevents. We're also looking at, as we move forward in the spring semester, in the work that Vision 20 is doing in and around the Gallup Student Poll, spending some time looking at both the district aggregate data as well as the school building level data in terms of the 6,000, roughly 6,000 students that participated in that, that survey earlier this fall, grades five through 12. In terms of the Vision 20/20 Committee, we've divided that work up into four work groups in and around the topics associated with the Gallup Student Poll. Those categories, again, if you're not familiar, are hope, engagement, entrepreneurship, and then the final category of career and financial literacy. So that work continues as the data is made available to these work groups and then as they begin to highlight the district's areas of strength and then also identify the challenges that exist with solutions to come. Another piece that you're likely familiar with by this time is the reauthorization, reauthorization of the SEA, which is the Elementary-Secondary Education Act, also deemed No Child Left Behind. So we exit the era of No Child Left Behind, and we enter into the era of ESSA, which is the Every Student Succeeds Act. So we've pushed information to you capturing a summary of that document, of that act, coming to us in part from the federal level in terms of the Department of Education, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in Missouri, but then also a number of associations that are pushing out information to board members, administrators, and teachers alike in regard to what this new era will look like. The one key thing that I'd like to point out is that we will have a period of transition in working toward meeting the provisions of that act. I believe it's not to take effect until 2017, '18. So we have some time, not only as a local district, but then also as a state Department of Education. We also have an opportunity to influence the work that's being done at the state level. And so we look forward to being able to impact learning, instruction, assessment, innovation, those pieces that come about in terms of conversations in the ensuing months. A couple of additional highlights in regard to the report. I mentioned the spring legislative session beginning. Again, the governor's State of the State address in and around Wednesday, January 20th typically is when that happens, so we'll look forward to hearing that. In addition, second semester begins, as Ms. Sullivan alluded to, with a flurry of activity in and around budget planning and development, and being able to fold in some of the work that we're hearing and some of the work that we're doing at the local level, but then also the information we're hearing from the state level in planning for FY 2017. So we will look to bring that to you as it's released from the department and as we walk through that budget and planning process. We were talking earlier this week in regard to new board members and getting up to speed on school finance, and that we're in a position right now where you've either spent quite a bit of time looking at budgets and school finance and are pretty well-versed in it, so we don't feel the need to really start back with members at a finance 101 level by any means. So appreciate your attention to that. The other thing that I want to end on is in working with the Kansas City Chamber of Commerce and metropolitan area, school districts that are in the surrounding area, there are a couple of initiatives that are coming about out of the Kansas City Chamber. One is the T-21 Initiative, the Tobacco 21 Initiative, which actually looks to increase the legal age of purchasing tobacco products, which would include the vape cigarettes that are out there nowadays from 18 to 21 years of age. So that's getting some momentum. You have some information that's been shared with you, and that we will likely look at that at a subsequent study session. Another conversation that's happening at the chamber level would be in and around mental health, and it's being deemed with the title of resilience. And what does it mean to equip students with the skills, whether they're a kindergartner or a 12th grader, with the skills necessary to navigate trauma, to navigate stress, to navigate depression? And so what we would typically associate with mental health and ensuing interventions, it's really now being deemed as resilience and a focus on creating young people that have the skill set, along with supporting their families with the needs that they have and meeting those children's needs. A lot of that work is being spearheaded by some research by Dr. Bruce Perry, if you're not familiar with that. But we'll look to see more information coming out of the Kansas City Chamber with training opportunities as well as some resources that are applicable to young people in meeting their development needs. Those would be the items that I had for my report, unless there are any questions from the board.
Thank you. Appreciate all of your updates this evening. In terms of the next several meetings, those are posted, as well as the school board election dates for candidates wishing to file. That starts tomorrow, 8:00 a.m. and runs through the 19th of January. Any other questions or clarifications around the schedule over the next few months? The board committee reports, are there any board committee reports we have this evening? Board remarks. Nice to see a room full of high schoolers this evening. I assume you're all high schoolers. Yes? All North? I see some North, Liberty High repping. Oh, one? Stand strong. Nice.
And they're here during winter break.
And they're here during winter break. Very good.
Leadership class.
I don't know how to say it, but we've lost a few members of our school community over the last couple of weeks, elementary and high school, and that's always a sad, sad time. Holidays should be a time for joy and sharing with family and friends, and it's sad when there's empty chairs around the table, so. I'm thankful of those families. Anything else? Okay. In that case, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. Sandra, may we adjourn?
Can I re?
Yes.
Eileen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Ashley Carey?
Thank you.
Thank you all. Happy holidays.